...a meeting to order, we have a quorum. We have an agenda in front of us if I can get a motion to approve unless there's changes by staff. No?
No changes.
Okay. Motion to approve. Okay, do we have second?
Second.
Perfect. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Perfect. We have minutes from August 22nd that were in our email packet. If everyone's had a chance to review, a motion to accept, or if there are any changes suggested.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Perfect. Thank you Jill for doing those. Then we will move on to our public hearing for the night, which is a conditional use permit to operate and own, permit to own federal firearms, arms license. And we'll go to Clara for that.
Yes, thank you. My thing has gone crazy here. So, the city was contacted actually first by ATF, which is the Bureau of Tobacco Firearms, I'm gonna miss all of the acronym, but to say that there was a person who had purchased a home in Fergus Falls, Mr. Steve Nissell, who was looking to transfer a license for a business that helps to transfer firearms, sell firearms, into a home address in Fergus Falls, 1233 Northern Avenue, and that they would require some sort of zoning information from the city in order to assure, ensure that he could have that permit just shifted over to his new address. So, I was the one who took that call at first, I believe it also went to our building official who really didn't have any comment on it at that point. Being fairly new to the planning side of things, I was like, well, I'll dig into city code a little bit, try to figure out, you know, what we say about this, and wasn't really finding anything that was giving me a good answer. So I reached out to the city attorney, the chief of public safety, and to our building official, just to see if they've dealt with this question before and how they've handled it. Since the nature of the business does not seem to be a normal home occupation, it involves firearms, which would maybe require some further restrictions. So, at the advice of the city attorney, the direction that we decided to go was to request that a CUP be filled out, and then when the CUP is approved and those conditions are placed upon the home, then at that point, we can let the ATF know that, yep, they are good to go in the zone that they've chosen, which is a residential zone R2, and that the city of Fergus Falls has these conditions in place, and then as long as those conditions are met, that they can operate, they can operate legally within the city limits. So that's what we've done here. Mr. Nissell is with us tonight, if you have any questions, but, and maybe, because I'm gonna get details wrong, but maybe you wanna just come up and explain what it is that you do and the license that you hold through the ATF.
If you wanna just state your name and address, just for the record, for Jill, that'd be great.
Yes ma'am. Thank you for having me this evening, by the way, thank you very much. My name is Steve Nissell, I live at 1233 Northern Avenue. My wife and I just previously moved here from Chaska, and we love it. So, just a couple of things going on at the house right now, but rebuilding things. But, anyway, I've held a federal firearms license, which is, that stands for FFL, if you don't know that, and I've had it for over six years. Mine's miniscule compared to, you know, like Fleet Farm, or the other companies that sell firearms and such. I keep a limited supply, I'm not a big conglomerate or anything like that. I do carry my, I do have my own firearms through licenses and things like that as well. I'm retired military, and I'm also a previous deputy sheriff, so I know, I know the ways around firearms and the community and such. But, basically, I'll certify somebody, if they come in and they wanna transfer a firearm from somewhere, they can have it sent to me, because by law, it has to be sent, sorry about that, by law, it has to be sent to a federal firearms licensed person. Nine times out of 10, people in your area, they'll look for the closest one. So basically, they'll call in my house, and then I get on, I get on the computer, which is the National Instant Background Criminal Check, that I can access, and it gives me about 10 seconds, they'll tell me if that person has any, you know, federal warrants, state warrants, any felonies and things like that, for people who can't carry, or mental health issues, or anything like that. So, I have access directly to the FBI database. That's the meat of my business, mostly transfers and such like that. The most I've ever carried on hand, on a firearm, is probably three to five, and I do have a safe for that, it's a 650-pound safe, that's waterproof and fireproof, and I'm the only one with the combination in my head, so. That's basically what I do back and forth, but if you go over to these other places, like, I'm trying to think of a good one, Cabela's, that's a good example, go to Cabela's, you know, they have the display all over the background, and with all the firearms and ammunition and things like that, that's not even compared to what I do. So, I'm just the little guy sitting on the side trying to make an extra buck, pretty much, so. But, everything's legal, I don't do anything illegal, if so, the ATF would be on my butt in prison, so, that's the gist of it. Anyway, I'm, from moving here, my wife and I appreciate, and by the way, she apologized for not being here this evening, she wanted to be here. But, we're looking forward to living here, we enjoy the neighborhood already, I mean, it's wonderful, everybody's been so great and nice, and being offered, talking to Claire and such too, that was very nice for you guys to invite me this evening, and I hope you guys decide to let me do what I've been doing for the last six and a half years.
Well, first of all, welcome to Fergus.
Thank you.
And to your wife as well.
Okay.
We're glad you're here. We're probably gonna finish our part of the, and then open the public hearing, we might ask you to step back up for questions.
Sure.
Thank you for the background, that's very helpful, I think, to all of us.
Yeah.
So, but, we'll give you another opportunity, so don't feel like you can't speak again.
No ma'am, I understand.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks ma'am.
Okay, so just some more of the little logistical pieces, we did send out the mailing to three, within 350 feet of the home parcel, did not receive any comments from anyone in the community, and I think that means that we can go ahead and do the public hearing portion, unless anybody has any further questions for me on the background of the CUP itself.
What, can you remind us what you're recommending for conditions?
Oh, yes, yes I can.
Just so everyone's on the same page?
Yep. So these are the conditions that were put together with the input of our public safety chief, Kyle Bergren, from the police department, and then also our building official, who has done different work with like JK Sports recently, well, within the last couple of years, grew their, their business, and so they also are doing firearm sales, so some of these conditions are things that he's placed on different buildings. So, what we're requesting, over and above of just like the normal things that you'd request of a home occupation, would be having a designated area in the home where the sales or transfers would take place, only the homeowner or the possible employee, because in a home occupation, you can have up to one employee, generally they're a member of the family, should have immediate access to the guns or ammunition, safe storage of the guns and ammunition, which Steve has already assured us they do have, a, an alarm system with the option to be connected to the police department, if enforced by the jurisdiction at this point, our police department is not enforcing that. They also, they're open to talk with you about an alarm system, but they haven't reached out to me about that any further, so. A video surveillance system is also suggested, it's optional per the state building code, but it is recommended, and then applying with all applicable local, state, and federal laws, which is what we're doing here tonight, with the zoning compliance for ATF.
Any questions for Clara?
Are you waiting to hear back from somebody with respect to the video surveillance, as I wish?
Um, no, so, the police department agreed to have that in there, but then did not offer any further, like, they didn't say that they would be requiring that necessarily, so I'm taking it as more of a suggestion, sort of like what the building code says about, hang on, let me get, why is it doing this?
We're getting music. So it's more along the lines of, it's optional based on the building code at this point?
That's my understanding, so we'll read that section again, but video surveillance system, optional per code but recommended, and then gun sales location, should have an alarm system with option to be connect, well, okay, so maybe, the option to be connected is the piece that's optional? So, that, okay, so, that is one, an alarm system, that the police department will want to-
That will be included.
Awesome. There we go.
Yeah, that's how I read it too, that the alarm needs to be there.
Great.
Okay.
Other questions?
No. If not, we'll open the public hearing, is there anything you wanna add, or speak to about anything, or specifically, these proposed conditions of the permit?
No, I totally agree with the permit guidelines, because, you know, it does make sense. It is fair.
Okay. Does anyone else wanna speak to this matter? That's a big no back there, so, okay. If that will close the public hearing, and bring it back to the commission for action or discussion.
Because I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit with the conditions as set forth.
Okay. Do we have a second? One second. Okay. Any other discussion? Anything else? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes. So it's not, we're not final decision makers, it'll go on to city council, as I'm sure they've explained to you, so, thank you for coming tonight, and I'm sure Clara, someone will be in contact with the next steps.
Thank you so much.
Yep, welcome.
Good to have you.
Yep, thank you.
Perfect. We will move on, unless there's anything else, for discussion on the edible cannab- I can't even say that, thank you!
Cannabinoid!
Cannabinoid! To pass this out in the night, over here!
Yes, so, where we have left off with the fun of edible cannabinoid zoning, is that at the last meeting, we had, it was, it was a smaller group of planning commission, we did have quorum, but we were missing several members, so-
And too many attorneys. I determined that. Too many attorneys that weren't on here.
Yep. So, but where, but where we kind of ended at the last meeting, was that we are interested in restricting the sale of CBD or THC, however we're going to term it, near school zones, we would like to restrict it so it is not being sold in residential areas, so essentially restricting it to business zones. We want to ensure that any manufacturing that is taking place, if it's happening in a residential zone, it has a CUP process that it's following, in order for us to know that it's going on there, and that we can impose certain conditions upon it, and that those, that the manufacturing would be taking place in the industrial zones. And then we also touched on, I think briefly, on the growing of industrial hemp, which we would restrict to RA zones, which is the residential agricultural, and not, probably not open up the residential agricultural to the sale or manufacturing, just the growing. And I think that was essentially where we ended with it.
That matches my memory, except for the piece we kinda talked about, like how homebrewers, like, that piece we kind of felt like was, we might have people that get into this as a hobby versus, you kinda talked about that a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, like a cottage.
Right.
Yeah.
Cottage food license and stuff like that.
Right. And now I'm trying to remember, did we send out in the packet, did that include the FAQs from-
The department of health?
Yes. So, it is not considered, the, the manufacturing, sale, whatever, of CBD is not considered a cottage industry, so, that's really not, from the state's perspective, an option that I think we can allow, at this point in time, until there's maybe a little bit more clarity from the state.
Which is just kinda happening.
What do you mean? We can't allow it? I mean, it's unregulated, right?
No, it, they say specifically, it is not a cottage industry.
Okay.
So, we, I think, should not say that we can allow it then, since if the state is saying it's not a cottage industry, we're not gonna license people to, or permit people to be doing this outside of the industrial side of things, I don't think we should try to go down the road of allowing that in the city.
Okay, so if someone was-
Is it excluded, or just not included?
Right. That's what I'm trying to figure out, and then the other question would be, if you're gonna use it as a cottage business, to me, that's different than the homebrew grow, you know what I mean, I mean, that's another separate, if you're not doing it as a business, where does that come into play?
Edible cannabinoids are explicitly excluded from the definition of food products found in Minnesota statutes 348.01 subdivision 4, so no, the cottage food exemption is an exemption from, from food licensing and applies to food. So edible cannabinoids cannot be produced under Minnesota's cottage food exemption.
So, as a cottage industry though, in my mind, it would be an assumption that you're selling a product to somebody, so is your question, if you're-
Right, if you're just, if you're the hobby grower, how does that come into play?
Well, I'm just, yeah, and I believe we have an existing business right in-
Yeah, I think we do too.
-Fergus Falls, that this is gonna impact.
Is she growing, and she should not be growing and manufacturing her own.
I have no idea.
I don't think there's any growing.
That'd be my gut.
Growing is only industrial hemp, and it has to be licensed under the specific section key in the state.
So growing is not okay, using under a cottage license is?
But if you're using under a cottage license, are we ever gonna know about it? Because they're-
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
But the problem is-
When you say using, what do you mean?
Not like smoking, or, I mean, I'm, sorry.
You mean like baking?
Baking.
Is anyone gonna ever tell you if they're gonna make it, are they gonna ever gonna tell you if they're making chocolate chip cookies and making them, and eating them?
Well, I hope you did.
Well, no, but that's what I'm saying, if-
Right, I have no idea.
Yeah, but that's, that's-
But then they'd, but then they'd be in violation of their cottage food license, right? Because it's a canned product, isn't it?
Yeah, so let's go to, let's go to our-
Sorry, I think we're getting bogged down in this, I apologize.
Yeah, there, and there are gonna be a lot of rabbit holes that I think we're gonna go down with this, just because there's still so much unknown about this, and I will say this, most, almost every other community that's currently dealing with this, has it under a moratorium, so, they don't have the same, I feel like we're on, like, a fast-paced process here, because we can have new businesses popping up without any of our restrictions in place, because we are, the city council said no moratorium in Fergus Falls. Almost every other community that's dealing with this right now, has a moratorium in place, so they are not getting those new businesses popping up, they've got the chance to kinda study this, take their time a little bit with it, I mean, to the extent that is allowed under an interim ordinance, but, so we're, we're on, like, a little bit of a faster timeline, I feel like, so we're gonna have stuff that's popping up, that we maybe haven't seen happening other places, and that we'll have to deal with as it comes.
To me, the retail part of it is the bigger concern than the grow part of it right off the bat. I mean, it'd be nice to do it in all, one big package.
Right.
But maybe we can't, if the concern is, is what's really facing us is the retail piece.
Yeah, when I read through this, just initially, I was, I had the same thing, I was like, whoa, whoa, we, like, we're, we're going down, like, it, just, I feel like we're gonna be putting ourselves in a position where we're gonna be backtracking, a little bit, as things progress, and, so.
Yes.
I don't know. So, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any way to get around that, but, no.
So, okay, so let's, well, let's backtrack right now, so where we are right now, is what we've got laid out in the draft ordinance, and we can, I can pull this stuff up.
Has council seen this, in a work session or anything?
No. No, they have not.
I mean, not that that should direct us, but I was just curious.
One question I have is, is when it says, restrict retailers from locating too close to a school, what, do we have a, an amount of distance that is-
There's a blank.
Yeah, I haven't-
Oh, okay.
Um, the, let's see, St. Cloud puts in, it's like 1,300 feet, I think, in their draft ordinance that they've done. I, I looked through our code and did not see other examples of buffer zones necessarily, with any kind of, like, footage saying, you know, you need this amount of space in between your business and this use, so I'll kinda leave that up, either to you guys, or to the city attorney, if he maybe has an example of what he would like to see, but-
So Sarah, when you talk about backtracking, are you concerned about, like, putting this all together in totality, or are you talking about individual parts? Because if we put together, yeah, I'm just thinking out loud here, but if, if we say, okay, the, the manufacturing, if we do one ordinance for manufacturing, one ordinance for growing, one ordinance for this, and then we can repeal that when we're done, but yet maybe we keep this one, then we're only backtracking one, not all of it.
Right.
I don't know if that's an option.
Right. It's an expensive option.
It looks like you, well, I'm sorry, I wasn't at the last meeting, I was on vacation.
That's okay.
But, it, when I looked through the, the notes from the last meeting, you, and I had mentioned this before, that when I had looked, Stillwater, is this modeled off, off of what they're doing?
Some of the language is similar, Stillwater focused a lot on density, which is just not a question that we've addressed here.
Okay. We kinda talked about that, and I think the group kinda came up with, we weren't too concerned, because we don't have the same, and not that we're not a tourist attraction, but we're not thinking there's gonna be 15 in a row on Main Street. I mean, that was kinda the conversation, right? Am I remembering that correctly?
And that's what they're concerned about, they're concerned about, like, becoming-
Like the whole town, becoming like CBD town.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, when we're talking about production, so, the definition that's given in, in Minnesota rules, is hemp processing, and processing means rendering by refinement hemp, hemp plants or hemp plant parts from their natural or original state after harvest. Processing includes, but is not limited to, I don't know how to say this word, decortication, revitalization, chopping, crushing, extraction, and packaging. Processing does not include typical farm operations such, such as sorting, grading, baling, and harvesting. And my question, after reading this, is, do we consider this definition of processing to cover manufacturing? Because there is not a definition of manufacturing that's given, in state statute, it's only this processing.
What, this is gonna sound like I'm not very smart, but decorten, is it, do we even know what that is? Have we Googled that word? Does anyone know what that word means?
I can Google it right now.
I think this is, I guess my reading of it is that, no.
Okay.
It wouldn't include manufacturing, I think that this is more of the hemp processing from, like, the harvesting to the, like, packaging as a, as like a product, but not, are you talking about, like, manufacturing, like hemp derived, or, I'm not using the right terms, like-
I think that's the correct term.
Edibles?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I don't think that, I don't think that that includes that.
So, as far as I'm aware, there is not a definition given of what it is to actually manufacture an edible product, beyond what is in the rules, which just, which just says manufacturing.
To me, the manufacturing is you taking something that's already had all this done to it, and putting it in something else, or packaging it.
That's what I think too.
Yeah, into an edible form, or a-
It does cover packaging, that's what I was just gonna say, it does cover packaging.
Well, it covers packaging of the, of the processed raw hemp material, not processing of like an end-use product.
Right.
Right. That's how I read it.
That would be, yes.
So we're talking more about taking that and making it into a gummy, or into a-
Or a chocolate, or a cupcake, or whatever.
Whatever.
Why, why wouldn't it be all encompassing, though? I mean, look at flour, you take wheat, you'd manufacture wheat into flour, flour would be manufactured into bread, why wouldn't you essentially just encompass it all? I don't know, if, regardless if it's hemp processing or manufacturing, if we have an industry that wants to locate into our town, I don't wanna do anything to necessarily deter that.
So is there language we can add to this definition that we already have, maybe we change it from hemp processing to manufacturing, and it encompasses all of hemp processing and includes the manufacturing of edible products, or the manufacturing of CBD products?
If we include it all though, then do we start feeling like we have to limit where it can be more?
Well, I think we're only, we're only allowing that in industrial, right?
The manufact, well, no, because we discussed having the option for certain kinds of manufacturing to be through a CUP process.
Right, in a business zone.
I think you could just do hemp processing slash manufacturing, and then, I mean, those after packaging, just put, like, comma, including, you know, what did you say, Ryan? Including, like, like, you know, making a-
You know, like combination with other ingredients-
Edible cannabinoid product, take that term from the definitions, or cannabinoid, is that how you say it? Product.
Okay, so include one of-
How did you say, a combination of other food products? What did you say?
I guess-
Combining with food ingredients.
Yeah.
To make a edible, I would use these same terms that we use in our definitions.
Okay. Okay. And then we leave the processing does not include typical farm operations. And then decortication is apparently the, a surgical procedure-
Yeah.
-performed to remove a fibrous tissue.
Yeah.
Wait, that's, doesn't make any sense.
I was just curious, because I didn't know what it was, what we were, we should probably know what the words were.
Maybe there's some sort of, like, you know, I'm not sure, thing that needs to be-
Should we get a plant, a plant doctor on?
Yeah.
We're good.
We have botanist over here?
Yeah. Is my only other thing would be, the security thing that came up in our last public hearing, is that some kind of a requirement that becomes part of some of this? And what is required of, like, alcohol and tobacco shops, is there any security, anything required for them?
Not that I'm aware of, the tobacco license might include some forms of security, like, I think everything has to be in a case, but I don't know that they have any-
I don't know if that's realistic for this, but, I just don't know, I mean, this is the first time, out of my years on this, that we've said we're recommending security systems, or we're asking for that.
But then if we're thinking about, I mean, if we're thinking about, say, home brewing, I mean, there are no restrictions around, like, I have, I can have a bottle of wine sitting on my counter, in my home, without any restrictions.
I'm not saying we need it, I just, it's not something we've discussed in the past.
Right.
So, like, maybe one of the ways around that is, obviously, they restricted it to 21 years of age and older, do we put some restrictions around not allowing minors or under 21 to be actually allowed in the store if the product contains THC?
I don't know, you have, you have, like, I mean, Holiday Gas Station, Little Chief-
Yeah, that's a good point.
You have a lot of businesses that are already-
I mean, I don't disagree with it.
Well, right, CBD might, is one thing, CBD with THC is a different, so, but-
But they have them up on the, like, in a case, and you'd have to show your ID to buy them.
Yeah. So, yeah, I suppose if we treat it the same way as tobacco, then what, what's the difference? Yeah. Talked myself right out of that one.
Yeah. That's why we're here, we're talking it out, figuring it out. Hmm, okay, so, one of my other biggest questions that I have before we, I think, before we can move forward in any kind of way, is really drilling down on, are we restricting the sales, or are, are we zoning cannabinoid products, or edible cannabinoid products, or hemp-derived tetrahydrocannabinol, THC, food and beverage?
I thought we landed on THC, but maybe that was, I mean, that was a small group last time, but I thought that's kinda where we landed.
See, this is what I mean about, like, you know, these-
See, this is what I mean about, like, you know, these decisions, it's like, I feel like there's just.
Yeah.
Ah!
Well, so, I thought where we trended last time was keeping the status quo as to everything unaffected by this July change in the law. Uh, and then mirroring whatever restrictions there are for alcohol and tobacco in terms of, you know, location and, and that sort of thing.
Specific to THC?
Specific to whatever was affected, I think THC is the term we've been using for whatever was impacted by that July 5th stuff. So, basically, everything to the extent allowed by Minnesota law is allowed here. And then we avoid a lot of the potential, you know, pitfalls and that sort of thing by just copying whatever the tobacco regulations are.
I agree with that, I, because I think we basically said we don't want to regulate more what was okay prior to the Jan- July law change. Is that your memory?
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
I second that.
The problem with using that same language from the July law is that they use CBD absent of THC in all of the legislative language, so, in the legislative language, it's just, it mentions THC at one point as an allowable, um, as something that can be allowed in an edible product, but otherwise, all the rest of the language is CBD, just overarching.
That seems to me, you know, be, you know, can we copy and paste the language, and not what did the law change? So, if we come up with our own terminology, that's fine, you know, but I think that was the idea, or the intent, I guess.
Okay.
We lost you.
Maybe a little bit.
Okay.
I'm, because I'm still, I'm still stuck on the fact that not all CBD contains THC.
Right, so I think the CBD that doesn't contain, and I'm, if I'm wrong, tell me, if it doesn't contain, contain the THC, doesn't apply.
Okay.
Only if it applies, if only if it contains the THC, am I, am I paraphrasing that?
That sounds right to me, and so, what's the difference between THC and, like, a cannabinoid, I have no idea, but we'll land on it.
Well, I think.
So, the term is then gonna be THC, tetrahydrocannabinol.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we all thinking the same thing, or are we all, because I'm seeing a lot of people going.
Yeah, I just, I, I, uh, I understand what Ryan's saying, but I also understand where you're struggling.
Okay.
Because the law is, it's broad, there, there's, it's broader than that. Then, but if we just want to go with THC.
I think, we, we talked a lot about this, and, correct me here, we basically landed on the CBD that was happening prior to the law, we don't want to affect the market having CBD lotion, or, you know what I mean? We don't want to all of a sudden have all these places having to get regulation that they didn't have to before. Is that, is that where our conversation?
Well, that, this doesn't, because the, the, the products are, they specifically say, you know, for human and animal consumption, so.
It's an edible, right. But then there was talk of if we're gonna go beyond that.
Well.
Define consumption.
Right.
Right. Because the, the added, the THC piece of it is what allows for a high of some kind, and CBD without THC does not.
We, we kept using, you know, real-life examples, so, like, the CBD chocolate that they sell at OutState would now be affected if it's not, you know, currently, by what we're doing, would be the idea.
Yes.
Well, I kind of compare this to, I mean, if you look at alcohol, and I don't know what the equivalent of the CBD is, but, you know, back in the day, it used to be you could go to the gas station, buy a three-two beer until, you know, 1 o'clock in the morn- maybe it's still the case, I have no idea, but, three-two beer until 1 o'clock in the morning, but they cut off regular sales at 10 o'clock at night. So, when you're in college, you used to go to get the three-two beer at 1 o'clock in the morning, so. Whatever the equivalent of cannabis is, that's what I'm looking for, and I think that's where we're at.
I think so, but I don't know if we're all on the same.
But I don't know if the language equates to that.
Well, I just, we, we went through the definitions, and if we want to go the route that we're saying now, this.
This is different.
This is different.
Yes.
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 That's all I'm saying.
What do, what do people want to do here?
So, well, so what we're mainly talking about is, on that first page, restricting the sale of hemp-derived tetrahydrocannabinol food and beverages, and maybe not all cann- cannabinoid products or edible cannabinoid products. Is that kind of what we're just talking about?
So, yeah.
Maybe just regulating the THC products.
So, even in, even in the Q and A, they define it as a non-intoxicating cannabinoid product, and then the second type they define as edible cannabinoids.
Where are you at now?
That's the same in the, in the draft ordinance.
Right, so, I think the first one, obviously, kind of takes care of our concerns with, like, the creams and lotions and stuff like that, but maybe we've go further on to just define it as edible products that we are.
Yeah, so, it, this, on, on this first page here, you mean? This, this edible cannabinoid product includes the THC?
Right.
Right, yeah.
Must not contain more than five milligrams of tetrahydro THC in a single serving, is that what you're talking about?
Correct.
I'm trying to find the actual update.
Okay, then the other thing, I'm just reading on something here, it says, can you get high from topical THC products? And it says it depends on the THC content. Topical products with higher doses of THC are more likely to allow a greater amount of THC to permeate the skin and reach capillaries, which means the THC will flow through the bloodstream and can cause psychotropic, or psycho-something effects uh, in some people. Though some CBD products have minute traces of THC, there almost certainly isn't enough THC content there to make you high in most, but with many laws and regulations changing, this could be, could be different in the future.
See, and I don't think, sorry, Beth, I don't think that THC in products beyond edible products is currently allowed. So, I think, yeah, so I think what, I think all that this law did was say, um, yes, you can have certain amounts of THC in certain edible products, but I do not think it opened it up to.
Everything.
Other products.
It says it has, it says it has to be less than 0.3% THC in those products.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, we're, we're okay on that for now.
Okay for now, yeah, well, and that's the other key thing, for now.
Right.
Until this potentially changes again, which, I mean, that's just the way that laws work, so.
Right.
We'll roll with the punches, but.
If you want to read a really, really confusing article, I'm, in the New York Times, there is, or no, this was PBS NewsHour, is CBD legal, here's what you need to know according to science, and it is so complicated, um, because even what you grow, depending on certain conditions, can change the amount of THC that's in a plant. Can put it over the limit or under the limit.
Yep.
These guidelines are talking about, so.
Which is why Minnesota specifically only allows for the growth of something called industrial hemp, which is highly regulated and has a very specific, like, it's a specific thing, and then that industrial hemp is what can, in Minnesota, then be manufactured into these other products.
So, uh, I just want to be clarified, are we proposing that, there's, there's two things here. There's the sale, and then there's the manufacturing, right?
Right.
So, we got, so, and, so when we look at sale, we're proposing that, they, we're only allowing the sale of both cannabinoid or edible cannabinoid, which would include hemp, CBD, and THC products, to business districts where tobacco is also permitted, and we're not allowing for any CUP process in residential zones, it's strictly prohibited.
Correct, but I'm gonna back you up, I think we're only restrict, we're, we're only going to be addressing the THC portion of it.
Right.
So, like, the, the example that I keep using in my head while, while I'm, when I'm thinking about this, is, imagine that Mary Kay comes out with a CBD line that doesn't contain THC, are we gonna tell every Mary Kay consultant in town that they cannot sell it from their home and they have to go get a storefront?
Right, that's kind of what we talked about, like, the Pampershuff effect, or whatever.
Yeah.
Or do we allow us a.
A CUP.
A CUP process.
Sounds like unneeded bureaucracy for something that really is harmless.
Well, that's what we're doing, we're, we're, we're just prohibiting it, so, there is no bureauc, there is no path for someone to.
Well, no, I mean, just the THC, though, so, if you're talking like a CBD line from Mary Kay that doesn't contain THC, why would we even want to entertain restricting them to go through that process?
We're allowing someone to sell guns out of their house.
Yeah.
Through a CUP process, I'm, I'm just wondering, like, from a policy standpoint of, like.
Well, I think that's what I've been trying to get, get to, is.
I'm just like, wondering, okay, we're allowing guns, but we're not allowing this, it's like, where is the line, I'm just.
Right.
I don't know, yeah.
But we are allowing this, this CBD, we are allowing that piece in the home.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I've been trying to drill down into, is do we, do we care so much about the CBD that does not contain the THC when the THC is inherently intoxicating? Although, according to statute, still non-intoxicating at 0.3%, or 0.3 whatever it is, which I don't understand, but.
Well, it's kind of like people that go to Walgreens and get enough cough syrup to get high, you know? That.
Yep.
If you, if you take enough of it, you can, but it's not in the dose that's.
Suggested.
Suggested.
I guess personally, my belief is, regulate the THC, not the CBD. That's just my personal standing, I can get on board with other stuff, though, too, if we do it, I mean, I, but that's just personally where I'm at.
I agree with you on that.
I agree.
Okay. Now, I'm hoping we don't run into something where there's some form of hemp extract that is not classified as THC that is also, but from what I've seen so far, that is not the case.
And I'm not saying that has to be the will of the group, I'm just, that's personally where my gut is right now.
Yeah, well, yeah, and that's, that's where, I think that's where I, I'm hoping that we get tonight, is, our policy is going to be that we, we do want to regulate THC, we don't want to regulate the CBD stuff that's already been happening and will continue to be happening.
And I guess regulating the THC to the point that we still encourage business growth, like you had mentioned.
The, the July thing creates a legal gray zone, we clear up the legal gray zone, done. No additional regulation beyond that.
That's my gut.
We went from legal gray zone to legal gray zone, to now maybe less of a legal gray zone, but we're getting there.
So, I was your head on this, because we missed you last month, and I feel like we are kind of just dragging you along a little bit here.
No, I'm just trying to make sure we're not over-regulating, because we can always, uh, I just think this is going to be a fast-moving thing. You know, and so, but I'm fine with, I'm just, as these three bullet points here, I'm just kind of trying to hammer down, like, where, where we're at. And I think it definitely doesn't make sense to restrict all of those things in a residential zone. I think it's just too broad, but, you know, and, so, I, I'm okay with staying with THC.
We lose the cannabinoid products, and we just go to edible THC food and beverages? Or just, or new, edible is repetitive there, but the hemp-derived THC food and beverages, and just do that in the first bullet point? Is that what we're saying?
I would take out edible cannabinoid products, because you can, you can buy, like, the little drops to put on your tongue that are CBD, but they don't have THC.
If, if you look at the definition of edible cannabinoid products, I'm not trying to be the person.
No, no, I'm fine.
It includes THC products.
Yeah, but it also includes non-THC products.
Yeah, but it includes both, so I think.
So, we just want, don't want to be inconsistent, you know?
So, we want to say, we want to say restrict the sale of, um, hemp-derived tetrahydrocannabinol edibles and beverages.
Yep.
Gotcha. Are we all on the same page on that? We all comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And then I think the sale of the edible cannabinoid products is not permitted in residential zones, that needs to go away to the sale of THC, what we just said is not permitted.
And I'll just, that's just like an extra clarification for, of, of what we had discussed regarding the residential zones. Because we were pretty clear that we did not want it in residential.
1,300 feet from school seems like a long ways to me. Um, I think it's too long for a town of our size, personally.
I can't wrap my head around how far that is.
That would be about four city blocks, typically they're 3, 350 long, Beth.
Okay, I mean, I, to me, like, a one-block radius? I don't know.
I mean, if you look at what we would send out for a public hearing notice is 350 feet, right? I mean, so, is, if that's, if we're assuming that, yeah, there's no impact anybody beyond 350 feet, maybe we stick with that footage.
How does that impact Walgreens to Walbe?
We looked that up at one point, the intersection of schools, and then that 350-foot radius.
And the old Target building and that strip mall.
It does affect, it for sure affects the strip mall, so that strip mall would not be able, I think, like, their last, no, the whole strip mall would not be able to have a, a business selling THC there, which, I mean, personally, I think I'm okay with, like, if that's gonna be our rule, that is our rule.
Or do we get to the point where school can be anywhere and we just allow it?
Yeah, so, so I guess my, I, when we were talking about the, the footage restriction, I guess, um, I was still thinking that we're mirroring it after tobacco, but is.
There is no square, there is no footage for, for tobacco.
So, I, so I gotta, I kind of go to, what's the point of the restriction if we don't see a bunch of kids out smoking, or, I don't know, I, I don't.
You see a bunch of kids out smoking?
Well, it's not gonna matter.
It's a block or three blocks away.
It's a issue anyways.
Right, yeah, on the way out the door.
No, I, I agree, I think that it's, that doesn't really get you anywhere as far as, like, the safety of children, and the, the burden is on these businesses not to sell to people.
I agree, that's no legal liability, is, don't sell it.
Right.
So, then, you're bussing kids into Lincoln right past a CBD shop, is that what we want in our community?
Or a liquor store, you know, I mean.
I mean, the thing is, they're gonna drive by it in, on their bus route anyway, somewhere. I mean, it's my thoughts, I mean, what difference if they see it out the window there, if they see it out the window a block away, it's just my gut.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
I don't know.
I don't think these stores are gonna sell, sell the products to a seven-year-old, or, you know, I mean.
Well, right, I, I can get that aspect of it, it just.
I do know, because the police department will come to me, if there's been a, like, a drug bust, then I have to buffer, and I'm drawing a blank what that buffer is right now, but, so if there was a drug bust within, I don't know, if it's 1,000 feet or 1,200, then there's further implications, you know, under that.
For the legal law, for the laws, yes. It's kind of like if you're drunk driving, you have a minor in the car, there's more implications, kind of thing.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, it is, I mean, it is up to this group to decide, like, what Nate is asking, is that the kind of community that we want? Do we, do we want kids on school buses driving past these businesses? That is your purview to, to make a decision in, in regard to that.
They could drive past them anywhere, basically, I mean.
There's a huge CBD banner out, right on the way to the bus garage right now, as you're driving out toward.
Yeah, I don't think into this world, it's like.
And now that you've said that.
I don't, I, I mean, I, I get it.
Be there.
I get it.
It's just, it's unfortunate, it's the one road into Lincoln School, and it's like, if that's, if we're not gonna put any restrictions on how far it can be from a school, I mean, obviously, that's a great retail location, I'm, personally, I think it's a poorer place for a school, but that's just my opinion, so.
I mean, if you're to redesign, there's a lot of things that are poor, you know, as far as that goes, but, you, you do bring up a very good point with that.
That specific location, yeah.
Those kids can't read yet, so that's probably.
And to some point, it goes on, educating, educating, the parents need to educate their kids, I mean, at, at some point, it falls back on these families, too, who do some of the education.
For that specific example, are kids even running free, or, and then is the business gonna, I, I just think it's, it's a, it's a nonexistent problem. If it became a problem in the future, we would add in a buffer, I think.
And I think these kids are, you know, they're released from school, they're walking all over the place, they're riding their bikes. If they can go one block, they can go three blocks or four blocks, so...
My opinion on that location, however, is at least those kids probably aren't going out and buying CBD products.
Exactly. That age group, yeah.
Yeah.
I see what you're raising.
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with no restrictive setbacks. I mean, I'm just... Purely, we should talk about that aspect of it though, right? I mean, it should be, what is the perception that we want the community to have on what we're doing here?
I'm definitely in favor of not in residential zones. And I, I think that that covers probably most of our schools except for that one. Because really, they're all, well, except for the private, OLV might be the only exception to that, but...
Yes, my other question is, there was a television news story, and I don't know where, so don't quote me. It was a national one, that they're dealing with quote-unquote "food trucks" that aren't food trucks, but they're like mobile CBD stores that go around to events. And I just want to, I don't want to like mess the waters up here, but that is a thing that's happening, like where these mobile things are coming to festivals and different events and setting up their mobile boutique of CBD products.
And we just addressed our mobile food ordinance and took out the provision that restricted food trucks from locating near a school, so...
And I don't know that it's considered a food truck. You know what I mean? It's a retail location.
I don't think we necessarily need to create some, like Ryan said, there really is no, there really is no issue here. Is there?
Right.
And I'm not saying there is. I'm just saying like this could be something that could come.
Right.
So don't all run out and buy a bus at the same time, trying to get the market. So I don't know, but it's, it's happening in some communities in our country.
Something to, yeah, it's good.
But again, the burden is on those people not to sell to anyone under age.
Well, and not to locate in a residential zone. I mean...
That would cover our elementaries at least.
But I think our language would be... Oh, man, I don't know. Now, mobile units are more difficult.
I just think it's something we need to have on our radar. Maybe not for this, but it at least needs to be kind of on the radar.
Because I'm trying to think back to our food truck ordinance.
Do we allow food trucks in residential?
We don't, yeah, we don't restrict the zones that they can operate in technically. They, historically, they have not in Fergus Falls. They're always at some, you know, either on...
They're where the people are.
Yeah, they're where the people are. They're at a park, they're at a festival.
Even, even regular food trucks operating in a residential zone, maybe it's not strictly prohibited. It could become a problem in the future, and in the future, we would deal with it, I think.
And wouldn't this cover that? Sale of edible cannabinoid products is not permitted in residential zones, even if you're a truck?
That language might be strong enough. Because we don't have anything that says you can't sell food in a residential zone. But we do have this, so, all right.
So I just wanted it out there that this is starting to happen some places.
Okay.
So are we comfortable moving on to like drafting an ordinance here?
I think we are getting there. Rolf's office has started it, so he has all of this information so far. They have it going into the form that our ordinances normally take. He has not expressed any concerns or comments about this thus far. So I think what we can pass on then to Rolf's office is the fact that we're focusing on the hemp-derived tetrahydrocannabinol edibles and beverages, that we're restricting them in, from the residential zone. We're going to drop the piece about buffer around schools. We're going to expand the definition of hemp processing to include manufacturing of edible products, correct?
Yep.
And the manufacturing, we're keeping, that manufacturing, then we're keeping to industrial zones, but opening a path for a CUP in residential areas, residential...
I thought we were keeping it in business, too.
Business. Business zones. That must have been a typo. And we're restricting the growth of the industrial hemp to agricultural, the RA district, which we really don't have very many of.
That's what I was going to say. Does that even apply?
The only time that would apply would be if we annexed a new area into town.
That's RA still.
That comes in RA and then we decide what to rezonate to based on, you know, the geographical locations.
So do we allow the growing in industrial with a CUP?
Um, I haven't gone down that path yet, but we may be...
If it's indoor growing, it's a greenhouse.
It's controlled.
It's a controlled area.
If it's like, if it's a greenhouse, if it's something like that, then yeah, there is a path for that already in our...
Even for CBD or for THC?
Industrial hemp.
Industrial hemp?
Yeah, I think if, as long as it would be allowed in the state of Minnesota, I think we would say, because we, because we don't specify what kind of greenhouses, we just have a path for greenhouses.
All I'm saying is, is when someone reads this and they see the only place they can grow is agricultural, we may need to call it out that with a conditional use permit, it could be permitted in industrial zones.
Is that what we're saying?
Isn't that what you just said about greenhouses?
No, greenhouses do not need a CUP. Like, there is a path forward for them already, just in our purpose.
Even if they're growing this?
Yeah, I would, I would say if they're allowed to grow industrial hemp, they would have already gone through the state process that says that they're allowed to do that, in which case, then we would allow it, just by virtue of...
As long as there's a path, that's fine. I just don't want people to think there's nowhere in town they can do it if they want to put up a greenhouse.
Well, and we do have, we do have some random bits of RA land in the city limits that are just, that have just remained RA.
And would that be allowed then in a residential zone?
There are some that have houses sitting in RA, because we dealt with one a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I mean, it's residential agricultural, so it's...
There's houses.
Oh, okay.
Typically, you would want to shuffle them, R1, the Bs, or the Is, not just let them sit RA typically.
Right. And realistically, it's not like they're growing corn or soybeans. This is going to be done in a greenhouse.
Well, that would be my gut, especially here. It wouldn't be cost-effective.
Right, yeah. So maybe it's a mute point that we even discuss that, if there's already a path forward for them to grow. If industrial hemp is legal by Minnesota in federal law, then why do we even need to address the growing of it?
So maybe the agricultural residential district just goes away.
Right.
I would agree with, I mean, it might be... We didn't get that far in our conversation last time to realize there was already a pathway.
Right.
Yes, so if you wanted to, if you wanted to become a grower of industrial hemp, you would go through the state process to get a license to do that, then I would hope you would start the process of finding the location where you want to do it. And at that point, they would look at the Fergus Falls City Code, which would say like, okay, we want to have a greenhouse. We can have a greenhouse here. If they want to do it outside, then they would have to do it on a residential agricultural lot that would allow for...
I think we can take that out.
Okay. Sorry, I'm kind of talking, thinking, so manufacturing, we changed the definition of manufacturing to define it within hemp processing slash manufacturing.
Yes, because as present, there is not a manufacturing definition anywhere that I've found.
No, I totally understand that. But I'm just going back to, we're going to allow for manufacturing of CBD products in industrial zones and business zones?
With the business zones with the CUP, industrial zones by rights.
Are we allowing for hemp processing in those, hemp processing and manufacturing? I just want to make sure that, we brought in that definition so that, so should we add hemp processing and or slash manufacturing into the, you know, just so we're not dissecting a definition into one, just so it's clear?
And were we going to change it to manufacturing of edible products?
I think we're only trying to affect the edibles that have been changed in the law, right?
Although I think in this case, you're asking a really good question. I think in this case, because we're not allowing the sale of these items in industrial zones, we could allow for the broader manufacturing of CBD products as a whole, which would then be sold to other, or like, they would wholesale it then to a different...
Right, and are we actually opposed to it being sold in an industrial zone? I don't know that I'm opposed to it being sold in an industrial zone.
Wouldn't they technically have to sell their product?
Yeah, I mean, I guess to me, I'm not opposed to it being sold in an industrial zone, personally.
We don't, we don't, I guess we don't, what we say in industrial zones, if I'm remembering the code correctly, is that you can have like, you can have kind of a showroom of your products there, but I don't know that we have a lot of examples of that in town. Maybe, I guess the old cornerstone cabinets building is an example of where you would see that, because that was an industrial zone. They had a showroom, so it allows...
We have businesses that run off the internet in industrial zones and ship and sell their products.
Yes. So I think, I think what I'm talking about is storefront. Like, a retail storefront is not something we see a whole lot of in an industrial zone.
But if someone wanted to have their production with a retail storefront, I guess I personally wouldn't be opposed to it.
Yeah, our code does say...
You mean like a brewery?
Sale of similar...
I mean, if you're going to build a manufacturing facility, like, let's say the chocolate place, Terry, however you say that or whatever, wants to sell...
Has like a tasting room or something.
Yeah.
Which they do have.
Right.
In the old cornerstone building.
So, I mean, to me, I guess I'm fine with the sale being in business and industrial.
Okay.
I don't know what everyone else says. That's just me.
Maybe the language isn't even restricting that. Maybe I'm going off on...
No, we're needing to add to the sale.
And others might not agree. I mean, you don't have to agree with me. My husband does it all the time.
I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with you. It just, I've, I've driven through Billings, Montana, and I see where their shops are, and it's not a very appealing city, well, to begin with, but it's literally like, hey, this is Jim Bob's Auto Pair and Garage, plus we...
Sell CBD?
Sell CBD and other stuff. And it's like, is that what we want? I don't know.
I don't know. It's just, I think more of the manufacturing side of it than the, oh, we're going to just sell this to, you know...
Well, yeah, I mean, in the perfect world, absolutely. It's set up almost exactly like a brewery would be, or a chocolate factory or something along those lines.
Selling products that are related to the manufacturing that they're doing. And what our code says is that if you are going to have some sort of sales happening on your property, it's related to the work that you're doing.
Well, then let's call it out that way. Allow it in commercial, in commercial or industrial areas as long as the sale is related to what is being produced in that, on that parcel, and call it out that way.
So if somebody who owns a business manufacturing car parts is all of a sudden like, hey, we want to also sell CBD, we would say, no, you cannot. Thank you for asking.
We call it out. If you're, if you're producing this, if you're manufacturing this, you have the right to sell it in this zone.
I like it.
I do agree with you, with you, what you're saying, because we have properties in Michigan. So I'm going to the UP quite often, and where they're selling it in Ironwood, Michigan, as you drive through, is, I mean, there isn't residential, there isn't, thank God, or schools. But that's one of the first things you see as you drive through Ironwood, Michigan. And visiting my son in Colorado, of course, you know, it's legal there, it's despair, you know? If everybody did what they're supposed to, but I will say like 28 years with the city and I'll just, in community development with Clara, whatever we put in the code, somebody will construe it or try to twist it on us, because this last six to eight years, I've seen questions asked that I hadn't seen in the previous 20. And I'm just, you know, broadswipes, nothing about this topic. So just, you know, I would agree, you know, take it slow so you don't get too far down the rabbit hole, and then you're trying to scramble back up out of it, but... And then my only, maybe it's semantics, is the term greenhouse versus, you know, building industrials settings. I hear greenhouse and I think of nature's garden world, or hear a burger with the plastic domes.
Yeah, but it could be a metal building that no one can see anything inside with grow lights. Yeah.
Yeah, we don't really define what that is.
Secured building, alarm system.
I mean, inside grow environment.
That's a, that's a good point, though. We don't define what a greenhouse is. Do we need to do that and say... So, because we don't want somebody setting up just like a fly-by-night building, because those are going to collapse in the snow, they're going to blow away. It's, we restrict them in residential zones.
We're talking about alarms for a guy who's going to be selling potentially firearms or ammunition, but then somebody goes into, I'm trying to think of a building that might be applicable, and all of a sudden, then there's no alarm system, and then they're breaking in, stealing product.
Okay, but let's, let's back up a second, because legally, today, I could go plant my field instead of soybeans and industrial hemp, and it would just be out in the open.
True.
So if it's from agricultural standpoint, and if it's legal, what do we care what type of building they grow in?
What we do care about is building code. We care that they're putting up buildings that adhere to Minnesota State Building Code.
But that's...
But if they want to pay a million dollars to heat a plastic hoop burn, that's on them.
No, you're right. So that would be, if somebody comes in and says, I'm going to put up a greenhouse, we would say, okay, you go get a building permit, and then our code official, or our building official would say, your building must adhere to state building code.
Right.
Okay. I'm talking myself out of a definition of a greenhouse then.
No, you're right. It can be out in the open.
But yeah, yes, okay.
We'll probably be rewriting this.
Do we, sorry, my last question is, do we need to add a definition? Just pull out the last sentence of the edible cannabinoid product and add a definition for hemp-derived THC? Just to have that, an edible, you know, that contains five milligrams of, or what, you know, or more, or any...
Okay.
It's probably not necessary, but if we have a term that we're using as a term, I always like to include it in the definitions, even if it's a very simple definition.
I agree with you, and I would like that, and I did, now that you have said that, when we first started talking about this, I remember spending like over an hour just trying to find the definition of THC in any of Minnesota's, Minnesota rules, or honestly, anywhere, and it did not exist. So yes, I think we should do that. And the definition will match what is already stated in the rules, but is not stated as a definition.
Yeah.
Yes.
So then, how does this, this goes to Rolf to finalize? We don't have a public hearing and we see it again, or we don't see it again until a public hearing? Or how does this work?
That's up to you guys. I mean, we can have Rolf put this into the form of an ordinance. We can do another meeting where we're looking at it and we're making sure that we're happy with it. And then we can, at that meeting, call for the public hearing and say, this is when we're going to host it, and we can do all of our notifications. At that next meeting, do the public hearing, then kick it to city council.
Is there any point in sending a draft ordinance to a work session of city council, just as a feedback before we open this can of worms? Not that anyone's going to read the notice and show up, but do we just want to kind of see if we're all kind of close on this whole thing?
Yep. So what I will suggest we do is bring a draft forward to a committee of the whole meeting and have them address it then.
So I think that we should see a draft.
Before it goes to the city of the whole, I agree with that. I do too.
Just to make sure that like, yeah, and then once we kind of have it more firm, then we send it there.
I just don't want to get into publication costs that are crazy, and then we're redoing it and redoing it, and we have to publish it again, and it gets expensive. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So I don't know if we need to meet, I mean, I don't know, I feel like we don't want to, this, we wait a month to see a draft, then we're two weeks out from a committee of the whole, then we're another month out because of the noticing, and then we're not voting on this, and we've basically... voting on this, and we've basically blown six months in this process, and we don't have a moratorium, which keeps getting raised as a concern.
Here's what I will say about that is, while I understand it is a long process, I also do think it's important for the public to be able to engage in it, even if that means coming to a meeting when we're still just discussing it and listening to it, because all of these meetings are open to the public, and so they can see the packet beforehand, they can read it, they can reach out to you guys beforehand and ask any questions that they have, so I would recommend that we don't go the route of you guys just internally seeing a draft and then moving it forward, that way, I would say, let's bring a draft to a public session.
That's fine, and while I was going at was still a public session, but when we went to once a month, which I'm probably the only one that was still here at once a month, or when we were twice a month, was we said we'd go to once a month unless there was a need for another meeting, so do we want to do two meetings in October is where I was going, because we left that open when we changed our structure.
Yeah.
Not that anyone.
Sorry, I didn't understand, yes.
You kind of remember that conversation, we went from twice a month to once, but it was, if needed, we'd do our other Monday.
I'd be down for a special session if you guys can make that work.
Is, are we signing the city attorney up for something?
Right, depending on their timeline.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's, let's.
Let's do what Rolf.
Maybe it's a regular October, early November or something, but.
Right, and maybe it's just, maybe it's not the next one that's the special, but maybe it's somewhere in the process, it makes sense to do the extra meeting.
OK, I'll send it to Rolf tomorrow morning, and then he can let me know how long it might take for them to draft it, I don't think it will take them very long, and then I will reach out to everybody and say, here's what the timeline looks like, when would we want to do a special session, if that's the direction we're going.
Yeah.
OK. So any final thoughts, comments, anything at all?
No, but I think we have a staff update.
Yeah, we do. Hey, we have Mark Jorgensen with us here tonight. Mark Jorgensen has officially joined the Community Development Department.
Yay.
Having abandoned the Engineering Department, I'm just kidding.
No one go turn your water on or your sewer.
He is now our planning and GIS specialist within the Community Development Department.
And we keep you, too?
Yes, so we'll be, Mark is going to be handling a lot of the, like, the day-to-day planner activities, so when people are calling and like, I want to put up a fence, where do I put my fence, like, Mark's your guy, and then we'll, we'll tag-team the meetings like we've been doing, and.
I'm the sign guy now, too.
Yep, Mark's got the signs.
Good luck to you.
Yep.
Signs and billboards.
So, but Mark has like a huge depth of knowledge about the city, the, you know, he worked really closely with Gordon, who was our planner for thirty years, so he's, he's got a lot of the institutional knowledge that we just did not have in community development before, so I'm very grateful to have him on the team.
Welcome.
And he is now in April Zumach's old office, so we did a bunch of switcheroo's.
Where's April now?
So April is in Jason's old office, and Jason is now in Mark's old office, so Jason moved into the Engineering Department, Mark is out next to the lunchroom, and then April's on the other side of him.
But title, Jason's still not, I mean, everyone's title stayed the same.
Jason's still building official, but.
Did you get a window? Finally, got it, buddy.
Yep.
Yeah, that's important.
Perfect, anything else, staff or council updates?
No, just thank you guys for going through this process with us.
Then there's a meeting for Downtown Riverfront Council that I think everyone saw an email on, probably.
Yes.
For not the river council, but downtown historical district?
Yep, so SHPO is sending up two of their staff members, so one of them is their National Register Historian, her name is Ginny Way, she's gonna come up and she's gonna do a session about historic districts, because the topic of making a downtown historic district has come up again through the Downtown Riverfront Council and through the Heritage Preservation Commission, which is a commission of the city, so she's gonna come up and talk about what that actually means, because there's a lot of misinformation out there about it, and then we'll see kind of where the discussion takes us, and if we go down the route of looking into historic district, we'd have to do a study that would tell us if we're eligible or not, but council wanted to know more about the program itself before they said yes to doing any further studies, so.
Great.
Yeah, that's October third at four thirty, and it would be a really, like, if you ever have questions about even other national register properties in town, like, she'll just be able to tell you a lot about the program, so should be really interesting.
Anything else from anybody? OK, if not, motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
Perfect, thank you.